Good evening, everyone. It's 7:30 on Thursday, February 10th. This is the Bellebrook Sugar Creek Board of Education meeting in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. And it's not to be considered a public community meeting, but there is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. So, Mr. Liming, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Mrs. Dorn?
Here.
Mr. Kinsey?
Present.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Carpenter, I think you said 7:30 start of time.
Did I say 7:30?
I think you said 7:30.
It is 7:00 o'clock. Thank you for that correction. I have no idea why I said that. All right, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. The flag is over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that correction. Mr. Liming, would you please give us the treasures report?
Okay, could I get a motion to approve the minutes for the January 13th and January 29th meetings?
Mr. Kinsey?
Second.
Mrs. Dorn? Any questions or corrections?
13th, I can't comment on those.
True.
29th, I can't.
Do you want to do them separately?
You probably do.
Okay, so we'll drop that motion. And do we have a motion just to approve the meeting minutes from January 13th? Mr. Kinsey and Mrs. Dorn? All right, please call the roll for the 13th.
Okay, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
13th.
Oh, yeah, I'm staying.
And Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. So, do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 29th? Mr. Kinsey?
Second.
And Mr. Price? Any questions or comments on that one? All right, please call the roll.
Okay, Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. Motion passes.
Could I get a motion to approve the treasures report for the month of January?
Seven.
Mrs. Dorn? And Mrs. Anderson? Any questions? Oh, please, give some more information to us, please.
I was just going to say that I don't really have anything special tonight, but our tax advance draws on the real estate tax revenues are starting to come in, so the pie charts that we have at the board meetings will make a little more sense from an annual standpoint. It's out of whack when you get two large sums of money during a year. It's hard in the mid-year to make a decision based on revenue pie charts or expenditure pie charts. So, after, probably during March, that report will be the one that will give us a better idea of what our real estate tax receipts for the year mean and that kind of thing. We're still going to be probably more like 75, 25 this year in local, 75 or so revenue from local sources and 25 from state and federal.
Okay. All right, any questions? Comments? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Could I get a motion to approve the amendments to fiscal year '22, final appropriations with an increase of $22,648.94? This is to bring eight different federal grants up to the slight increases that the allocations had this last month. So, they're all federal grants.
Seven.
Mrs. Dorn?
Second.
And Mr. Kinsey? Any questions then from board members? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, any correspondence to share? Board members. All right, moving on, we'll go to reports to the board. Sugar Creek Township, we have Mr. Kramer here from the township as well as, this is DeStefany, DeStef, is that correct pronunciation?
Sir.
On a screen. So, oh, and Mr. Muller is here also from the township, yes.
Here. Carol Till.
Okay.
Carol Till.
Carol Till for that is here as well, thank you. Okay, I'm not sure who's going to start.
Who's going first?
You want me to go first?
Sure.
So, before I do the handouts, probably.
Sorry, I have to.
We have some. Sugar Creek Township trustees got some hard money, American Relief Program. So, we got about $860,000. And so, this is found money. And just this last Monday, we resolved what we're going to do with that one. So, a lot of people came to us with special interest and things that they wanted to do. And the nut of the story was, we came to the conclusion that, as you all probably know, Sugar Creek Township is the fastest growing city or township in the four county area. So, the Miami Valley, the fastest growing township is Sugar Creek Township. We grew from 2010 to 2020, 18.6%. So, to that end, we said, what can we do that benefits the people the most? So, there's a lot of special interest groups, you guys know all this stuff. And we came to the conclusion that the first thing we needed to do was make sure that we had fiber throughout the entire township. So, we're not here, we took the money and said, we want to make sure that if we've got people working from home or students, if they don't have high-speed internet, they're not going to do their homework. What, they're going to lax? And there's an issue. So, first thing we did is, we took the money and said, because of people working from home and because of students, we want to make sure that Sugar Creek Township had high-speed internet throughout the whole township. And this is why the township's growing in infrastructure was really cool. And part of the art piece was to get infrastructure. So, south of town, we're using one, we're paying the whole bill for south of town, and we've got that money allocated. It should be done by April. I know school ends in May or June. But by the end of April, we should have south of town done. North of the township, up by Van Eaton Road, we're doing a joint venture with Green County, and Green County selected Cincinnati Bell to do that. And so, they're doing a matching fund with us, so it doesn't cost us as much money. And that'll probably not be done until the end of the year. With the rest of the money, which is about $500,000, we decided to redo the roads, fix the roads. In the township, the roads are classified three different ways, poor, fair, and good. And there's all kinds of classifications to figure out how to do that. But the nut of the story is, we will take the money that we already had allocated, which is about $150,000, and we'll add $500,000 to it and be able to really improve the roads in Sugar Creek Township. And we felt that those two things were probably the most beneficial to the people in the township. So, just thought I'd give you that little tidbit. If you haven't heard that, before Carolyn does the presentation on the memorial park that we want.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'll answer all the hard questions if you need help.
Carolyn, you're up.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wow, okay. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Carolyn DeStefany, and I'm one of the three Sugar Creek Township trustees. I am an Air Force veteran, and my husband just recently retired from the Air Force as a full-term colonel. And I'm sorry that I can't be there in person with you this evening. We scheduled a visit with our daughter and son-in-law before I knew this meeting was going to be happening tonight. So, I am speaking to you from sunny San Antonio, Texas, where the 75 degrees right now. So, I'm sorry I'm not there, but I'm glad we're able to get the technology to work and I can give you our readings this way. In showing our contact information for the 3D Township trustees and our township administrator, Barry Tiffany, so you can feel free to reach out to any of us. These are our cell phone numbers, so you can contact us directly. And I do want to say that this project does have 100% support, unanimous support from all three township trustees, so we're all on board with this. And additionally, both of my fellow township trustees, Wright Kramer and Marvin Muller, are there with you in person. So, if you want to discuss this any further, you can feel free to call me or to talk to either of them at your meeting tonight. So, to give you a little bit about the vision of what we are looking for and what we're planning for with this military memorial, first of all, we want to honor military veterans from the six branches to include all of the previous five, so the Air Force, Army, Coast Guard, Marines, and Navy, and then the very new Space Force that's also just come out. And you may or may not know, but Wright Patterson Air Force Base is the largest single-site employer in the entire state of Ohio. And very many of our Bellebrook Sugar Creek presidents are either military, government civilians, or federal contractors. So, it does seem fitting that we recognize their contributions and sacrifices to our So, we've not done any actual design specifications of exactly what we are going to do, but these are several examples of sort of the field that we're going for. So, we wanted very much to have a park-like feel to it, and we were thinking that we will definitely incorporate park benches and possibly a picnic table or two into that vision. We will have at least one flagpole featuring an American flag and then definitely a military branch. So, those pillars to designate each of these services. And something you'll notice in both of these designs, we are showing paper bricks. And we are planning to incorporate two colors of paper bricks, red and gray, that can be purchased as a fundraiser. That takes me to our next slide. So, for this brick fundraiser, we actually have the two colors. And as we mentioned, so obviously, the focus of this memorial is for veterans, and all veterans bricks will be featured in red. So, that'll be military, active duty, and veterans. But we also didn't want to leave anyone in the community else that might be interested in purchasing a brick. So, we are also offering gray bricks that can be purchased by any community member, first responders, or businesses. And that will also allow for very nice design features having the two different colors. And these bricks are tried and true. You'll see in our picture, we're showing Young's Jersey Dairy. The company we're looking at is Forever Bricks, and it's the same company that Dan Young used for Young's Jersey Dairy. So, we know this company is established, tried and true, and good to work with for that. So, I've lived in our community for about 22 years, and I actually never knew until very recently that the city of Bellebrook had both a Vexens Memorial and a First Responder Memorial at Patricus Park, which is located on West Franklin and Venco intersection there. But I have gotten the question on several occasions, why does the Bellebrook Sugar Creek community need another memorial park? So, we are planning that ours will be different for several reasons, and that takes me to our next slide. Why a new memorial and why does this benefit the community? So, I have four major reasons for visibility, personalization, accessibility, and being an adaptive location. So, to go into this a little bit further, as far as being visible, we would, the two sites that we are proposing on Upper Bellebrook and Feewire intersection, it's very, very visible to the majority of the citizens. So, obviously, we have a lot of students in the three schools located in that general vicinity, and also quite a few residential people that are driving past those intersections. So, it would be very, very visible from the road for a general person in our community. And personalized, as I just mentioned, the dedication bricks for the loved ones, and that we can designate, sort of have the military people featured as a veteran memorial, but also include the entire community in that program. It will be accessible, and this is very important, that it is walkable location from the high school to middle school. It's right off of our bike height path. It's walkable even from Bellebrook Cemetery that features quite a few veterans there, and it is walkable to the majority of our residents in the community. And for adaptive location, we very much want to make sure that whatever design we utilize, that it will allow for large gatherings of people. So, we will have the flag and the pillars located in front and then have a large area in the back where if there is a large group of 100-plus people, that it'll accommodate that, and they have standing room in the back to do that. But also, we want it to feel like a park and have benches and perhaps picnic tables where it can be a quiet contemplative space for people, if that is what they're looking for as well. So, the two potential locations we're looking for with this memorial are the Pine Court location, which is northeast Upper Bellebrook Road and Feewire, the intersection there. And then, we're also, our second choice is the north of the high school water tower on the southeast corner of Upper Bellebrook and Feewire. And you may wonder, why are we bugging you tonight as far as having this on one of these two locations, neither of which Sugar Creek Township owns currently? And I wanted to include this picture. Here, you can see an outline of Sugar Creek Township, and then you can see that Bellebrook is incorporated inside of Sugar Creek Township lines. And what you may not know, we're sort of the ideal, ideally situated, in fact, Green County uses us a lot for what ideal zoning looks like. So, if you look here on our Wilmington Pipe Corridor, that is our business corridor where we have a lot of large businesses, and it's very, very congested. And then, we go into our plaques where we have Eden Meadows, East of Eden, Cables Mill over here, and Deerfield Estates kind of up in here. So, and then, we go rural, when you get out beyond that, into the south side of town. So, we really don't have, if you look at property that Sugar Creek Township actually owns, we have our township building, which is just south of the city of Bellebrook, and then we also have our safety building that is up here in the commercial corridor. So, neither of those locations are particularly walkable from the majority of our township residents. And it's also, as far as wanting to have a gathering spot that is visible, accessible, and adaptive, as I just mentioned, we're very much wanting to get the right feel for this memorial. So, we're thinking either of these other two locations would be more ideal for what we are going for. So, the two locations, again, we'll go into, we'll dive a little bit into the Pine Court location. From what we understand, the Bellebrook Sugar Creek School gifted it to the Park District or something around a dollar or something to sell the Pine Court parcel to the park years ago when Dr. St. Pierre was the school superintendent. And the township anticipates that we will need about a half acre of the land for this memorial. But it's our understanding, and what the park has told us directly, is that they cannot provide the land to the township, is what they are saying is their situation right now. Did, as we mentioned here, we approached them in 2021, and the three Park District Commissioners did vote in favor of allowing the township to build the memorial, but they did have some constraints on that. They said that the park wants to maintain the ownership of the half-acre property. They also want the ownership of the actual memorial, but they want the township to pay for the memorial, and they want the township to pay for all future site maintenance indefinitely. So, that is problematic from what we understand as a township, because we are hoping to utilize capital improvement funds from the state, and we obviously would want to be able to allocate some of our Sugar Creek Township taxpayer dollars to that site. And if we don't own it, it's our understanding that we cannot utilize taxpayer money for a location that is not actually Sugar Creek Township property. However, the park is suggesting that they, that we might be able to earmark money through a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that they have established called Friends of the Bellebrook Sugar Creek Park District that they have set up through pre-giving. They don't currently have anything set up for memorial site, but this video adjuster, he said that they might be able to set something up like that. But legally, we don't believe that that is a viable option for us. And to kind of give you a little further example, so we do know with the example of Patricus Park that I mentioned earlier, with that example, the city originally owned the park itself, and the Park District did all of the maintenance for the city. And eventually, the park determined that that wasn't a good deal for them to have to do all of the maintenance when they don't own it. So, they did go back to the city and ask, hey, can you let us actually own this park, which is what ultimately ended up happening. However, in the case with this proposed veterans memorial, Sugar Creek is asking to pay for all of the construction costs, all of the ongoing maintenance costs, and they are saying that we would not own the memorial or the lane that it sits on if this goes through the way they're proposing. So, we certainly want to be reasonable and work with the Park District and find a way that we can do this, but we do have to work with legal and fiscal constraints that we are able to work in so that we can utilize capital improvement money and taxpayer money. The second option is north of the high school water tower and north of the parking area for the practice fields. And I know some people kind of refer to right where the scrubby trees are in there. So, again, we would be looking for half an acre of property, and if we were able to acquire this land, we would be willing to pave and slightly expand your current parking area. And we will also, with that, want to make a point to say that that would still remain school property, the parking area would. There has been some concern, just the way the road bends right here, that it might be a safety issue to have pedestrians here at a memorial if we didn't have some kind of security or safety pylons or some kind of barrier, steel post or concrete towers. So, the, there, if we go with this location, the township would also agree to put some kind of safety measure here to protect pedestrians on the bike height path and also on the memorial site itself. One thing I would like to point out, this drawing isn't exactly the way, what we're visualizing. As I mentioned, we would want the flagpole to be here and the service memorials on the site so that we could expand out this way into the grass if there was a large gathering or expand into the parking lot, depending on if there were vehicles there or not. So, we certainly want to have that expandability option. Several other considerations, we will need access to electrical power. It's just standard military protocol that any future flag will need to be lit at night. And something else we were thinking about, security could be an issue, and we are planning to utilize what's called a block remote camera. And it's the same cameras that are used by police departments, and that would allow for constant recording of the site 24/7. And we're hoping that that would deter vandalism, and it would certainly give us some objective evidence if it did occur. And those tapes are kept on-site and could be called back for, I believe it's a three-month period, so quite some time there. And this is a picture of what that camera looks like. And again, I mentioned that the township believes we need to own this memorial property, and we are applying for state capital improvement funds, working with our legislators, and we are working, we do have the brick fundraiser getting ready to move. I was also asked at one point, what funding source would we use other than that as far as township monies? And we would utilize general fund money. And once we secure and finalize a location for this veterans memorial, we will send a flyer out to our residents, and we certainly want to make sure we're being transparent in our desire to create this memorial and make sure that the residents are aware of it, and also advertise for the brick fundraiser for anyone that wants to participate too. But it is our intention to be very transparent in our desire to do this and make sure that we have community backing if we can get a location and start the planning process with this. So, as far as conclusions, what our actual ask is, we are asking you to select either option one or option two and possibly help us in securing one of those two locations. I do mention here that we were hoping to have a firm location by the third week of February. We are trying to work with the state capital improvement funds as far as having a hard deadline up. We do need to apply for that. And I know your next school board meeting is on February 24th, but if it's not fully secured by February 24th, but we do know that there is some commitment and active involvement on that, it is certainly not a deal breaker, and we will work with you. And I think that we might be able to still apply for our state capital improvement funds if we know that there is a true interest and agreement with your board on that. So, our desire is that if you like the Pine Court's choice as a board, is that we believe that you originally received the property or that you transferred the property over to the park and they received that for free. And we understand that Dr. St. Pierre indicated that that land was given to the Park District with no stipulations for later uses. And we do believe that this memorial will benefit the school and the community and allow for patriotic ceremonies such as the Junior ROTC and the Lions Club. We've been to Memorial Day ceremonies at Bellebrook Parks, similar, those kind of events. And the actual ask here is, we would ask the board to work with the Park District to relay the message that you agree that your earlier land transfer does not preclude selling or transferring the township one-half acre of land for this worthwhile memorial site. The second ask is, if you are not in favor of the Pine Court location, to possibly sell one-half acre of land at that water tower site there. And although it's not as publicly visible as the Pine Court location, it is still a good location for us because it is still very visible, and it does have parking readily available there and is right conveniently located off of the bike height path. But we would need to make sure that we address the safety concerns to protect our pedestrians there. So, again, if this is the school board's proposed, or that you accept this option, we ask that you would approve the land transfer of approximately half an acre so that we can apply for available funding, and then the township will in turn agree to pave the parking lot and install the pedestrian safety barriers. And in conclusion, I thank you for your time and consideration. I do just want to say, we are very fortunate that we believe we can do this project at minimal cost to our taxpayers and citizens because we are utilizing the paper patio bricks that'll be funded by outside organizations and contributors. We are trying to utilize the state capital improvement funds. We have interest in several folks willing to dedicate the World War II bronze statue.
Did you do that?
No, I did not do that.
Secret button you had.
Says we've lost our network connection.
Okay.
World War II bronze statue. That's where we left off.
We have an organization that is working on a bronze statue that'll be paid for by that organization. So, the nut of the story is, there's minimal cost to the township, that we will buy, willing to buy the land from you if that's what you choose to do, and we will pave that parking lot for you, and we will do that forever. So, there's some benefits to both of us, and we just want to make sure that you know that those options are available, and pause in your court now and see if you can make one of those options happen.
A quick question.
Sure.
The park indicates that they're understanding they can't provide the land to the township. Is that because they believe that there is some stipulation that we made? Is that?
I'm not sure why.
I know.
Go ahead, maybe.
I personally met with them when I was a trustee, and their concern was, it was just the feeling that they felt they might
it was just the feeling that they felt like they might betray the trust or somebody donating the land to them. And then they turned around and sold it and it made them feel like the commissioners would feel like they betrayed. But they weren't against it for any other reason such as my knowledge of the way. I mean, I met with the commissioners and they all agreed to do this at Pine Court.
When you say the commissioners, do you mean?
The park commissioners.
Oh, the park commissioners, okay, okay.
But then they didn't approve it eventually.
They did, they did go on and said it was good. They just felt like it didn't look right to take money for a land that was donated to them.
They wouldn't sell the property to us. They would allow us to utilize the property to build it, to put in the infrastructure, but they would retain ownership because, as they didn't explain, they didn't feel like that was the right thing to do to turn around and sell land that was donated to them.
Given to them, sure. Yeah, they had donated.
I think as long as, I think if they, if they heard from the school board that the school board didn't have an issue with the use of that land for a veterans memorial, that would put their mind at ease that they weren't alienating a community partner and then allow them to hopefully move forward with that.
They just wanted to know that they didn't want to betray your trust since you donated it to them.
We discussed this at our meeting, which was the 29th of January. And we had some initial discussion that's what set the agenda for y'all to be here tonight. And I really appreciate you coming out from a township perspective and making the presentation. We had some back and forth discussion on the 29th about, and we were aware of these two options that were being considered. And what it's worth, I offered up my opinion, just opinion of, you know, everybody can have their own opinion, of course. But it would seem to me that the most logical and beneficial location would be there, Pine Court, for several reasons. One, right now, it's a green field that half the community doesn't even know it's theirs as a park. Nobody goes there and spends any time in that field because they don't know it's there. There's nothing to bring you there. It would be quite visible to the community as you're driving by, whether you're going east or westbound on Feedwire or stopping south off of Bellebrook. It would be eye-catching. With what they have proposed in terms of benches and things like that, it'd be, it could bring people there to actually go there and use that field for other purposes. Frisbees with their dogs or law with their kids or whatever. And a major concern of mine, as far as considering the land just north of the water tower there on the south side of Feedwire, I always tend to look at things from a safety perspective. And it concerns me enormously thinking about eastbound traffic going at, you know, whatever speed and distracted. And we have our J ROTC kids out there and here comes a car. Granted, there's been talk of being able to put barriers there, but I bet you we can go find some pretty good YouTube videos of cars going right through the top of car rails and concrete barriers and everything else. So I personally see almost, other than the fact that we cannot put it at Pine Court, I would rather be there at the water tower than over by the Sugar Creek Police Department where people will drive by it for the next, you know, 50 years and really not even know what it is. Kind of like what we see in downtown Bellebrook. I didn't know there was a memorial there. There's no parking, there's no magnet to bring you there. So from my opinion, again, is that Pine Court just begs to have this. And of course, we're dealing with this quandary that the park district is spaced with, that they essentially hold to a sacred tenet that once they get property, they do not give it up. Because like Ladyne said, they feel like they are violating trust. But I think this is, and it would have to be considered an exception to that. If we're talking about a government-to-government transfer of a small portion of that land for the benefit of the entirety of the community, I don't think anybody's going to say, oh, you know, that's not good. And, but you know, the point being if they sold it, then it'd be like, well, yeah, then they got money for something that was originally given to them by the school district. So to me, it just seems logical and just makes sense to really ask the park district to consider the fact that the school district provided this land to you in the first place. And in the second place, we would benefit, our school would benefit from J ROTC members being able to go up there and have a ceremony that's veteran-specific or others such as 9/11 and whatnot. And so it would just seem to me like we would enable the park district to basically accommodate the township if we formally ask it. And to that end, oh, by the way, I put together a memo. I will read it sometime after we have some more discussion. But I'd like, this is the memo I'd like for us to present to the park district after I allow you all to offer your thoughts on the matter.
Does anyone know when the next meeting with the park commissioners? I know they have meetings very early in the morning.
The 4th Thursday is.
The 4th Thursday?
4th Thursday at 7:00.
So it's the morning, would be the morning of our next meeting?
If you mean on the 24th, that would be correct.
I mean, I agree with you, Kevin, and that's to the T honestly. But option one here, Pine Court, as a community member, that's a preferable location to me.
Sure.
That if the park district is hard over no, then I'm willing to consider option two. Discuss further with the administration. One consideration that hasn't come up about, I love the upper p hanging hat. I did read that drainage would go towards practice fields. I don't know how much drainage that would be and how much practice time would zooms. And then also, Carolyn was talking, she mentioned a lot of, a number of times about being a quiet, contemplative spot. And there's plenty of hours during the day when that is not a white, contemplative spot.
No.
But I agree with you, Kevin. I'm happy to, as the rest of you are okay with that, you and I, Kevin, as the veterans on the board, would like to go to that park meeting, or that district commissioners meeting that morning just to assure them that. So I acknowledge no one on this board has any qualms about them utilizing that site for another park-type activity. This is still going to remain a part.
Right.
That's a preference.
I would have some concerns about the water tower area just because we don't, we haven't done our full study on how we're using some of our property, what our potential growth areas are and things like that. I would, I'd want to spend some time going through that if the Pine Court, for some reason or other, the park district doesn't go along. But I think, I think that the park district or the option of Pine Court is the right one. For a lot of good reasons that you both have said.
Before pressing to the water tower location, I would want to hear from Serb Del. I would want to hear from, you know, the other members of our school community that have used that site, the marching band leadership, you know. There might be something that I'm not thinking of, other than is drainage going to be an issue and give you a swampy, you know, lacrosse field.
All right. I'm curious, you gave a lot of good information about funding sources. Is there any proposed timeline or how long it might take for that funding to come in and first shovel the ground or anything like that?
So.
Go ahead.
So we would, if the park district is agreeable to the Pine Court location, we would move forward with that funding from legislators, the ASAP. I would say probably realistically, we would be, you know, a year or two out before shoveling the ground as is most, you know, state funding programs that we did. But we would make it happen as quickly as we possibly can.
Right.
David, you want me to cover this proposed letter to the park district then?
Sure, we can do that or we can do that items of information.
I'd rather just do it now and be done with it.
You okay with that? Okay.
If anybody who's here just heard this topic.
Sure, it'll be done.
Okay, so let me read this as loudly and clearly as I can. And this would be if the board so agrees, a letter that would be signed this evening by the board. In a presentation to the Bellebrook Sugar Creek Board of Education, Sugar Creek Township conveyed a proposed plan to build a veterans memorial that will be located in the field at Pine Court just north of Bellebrook High School on Feedwire Road. Per the township, in order for them to build and maintain the memorial, the township must own the property. The township is therefore requesting that approximately one-half acre of 3.13 acres be transferred or sold to the township specifically and only for the purpose of constructing the veterans memorial. The school district previously transferred the Pine Court property to the Bellebrook Sugar Creek Park District with no stipulation on how the property would be used. Considering that Bellebrook schools could benefit from a veterans memorial by, for example, having a nearby walkable gathering place from the J ROTC Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps to commemorate veterans and other solemn events, Board of Education respectfully requests that the park district consider, if necessary, the transfer or selling of approximately one-half acre to the township. The Board of Education further requests that the township and park district work closely together to realize the goal of establishing a veterans memorial at Pine Court. Recognizing that there may be alternatives to the township obtaining ownership of the land from the park district, for example, funds transferred to the park district, transfer of one-half acre back to the school district for disposition as the school district would desire, the Board of Education asks that two entities expeditiously work together to determine a mutually agreeable way forward for the memorial to be funded, built, and maintained at Pine Court. Per the township presentation, time is of the essence and several opportunities to acquire critically needed funding will expire in February. So that's the proposed wording of a letter to the park district and its request. Recognizing that there's a park side of the story, you know, and so that needs to be run to ground and resolved. But it's something that doesn't need to be elongated in the reasons we heard this evening. There are opportunities for state funding that are going to timeout later this month. So I think it's urgent as much as a non-life event is urgent, but action needs to be taken. And so hence the interest in this letter. I'm still signing. Whether you're up for it or not, but.
Dr. Cozza, do we know why the land was transferred in the beginning?
Again, the Upper Bellebrook Road was reconfigured there. It used to be a part of the property and just was awkward, but I don't know beyond that, I don't know why.
I think it just wasn't really useful.
Yeah, probably. Fields or anything else because you have to cross the road.
I'm in favor of Kevin's letter.
Yes. Do, can we do a motion? So is there a motion that we approve the letter and sign it this evening to send to the park district? Mr. Kinsey?
Director.
Mrs. Anderson, any further discussion? All right. This is an addition, but please call the roll.
All right, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. We will send the letter to, this letter off to the park district.
Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Do you need to know when it signs?
Want to go with one of these?
One time list.
Yeah.
Actually, you're working with Carolyn too.
Sorry.
You're working with Carolyn already.
We're passing around a letter to get signed right now.
And are we also proposing to sending that to them or giving that to them on the 24th or both?
Send it to them tomorrow.
Yeah, I would think.
Okay, we can send it out and then attending on the 24th also, want to do that?
Send it to you?
Yeah, I think just, I think it's wise for just two of us to go. I don't care which two of us, but two of us, Dr. Carpenter, if you'd like to.
I heard you.
I'm fine to go.
Yeah. Our veterans.
Looks good for me to go that day too.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you, appreciate you coming out this evening.
Thank you.
So I will contact the parks to let them know that you would like to attend on that day if they want to put us on the agenda or however they want to do that.
All right. Keep it going. Going on to our next report to the board, busing changes and new eligibility zones.
So we've discussed a little bit of this already in previous meetings, especially last month, but to just go into further detail. So if you want to go on to the next one. So Jacob, Jacob Willhite is our transportation supervisor. He's going to cover a couple of these bullet points and then I'll take over for a little bit and then he's going to talk about ineligible.
Hi, good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what we're doing to change our busing next year, hopefully for the better. It's been kind of a point of contention in this district, Aggerstein, well before I got here just due to budgeting and having to make cuts. So hopefully this will help. This is going to be a new system to this district. This is something that I bring with me, having experience using it in other school districts. So what we're doing is trying to restore bus service to students, including the high school. But we'll still unfortunately have to have those ineligible zones. At the time that we had everyone being bused door-to-door service, we had 45 buses, I believe, and we had somewhere around 38 drivers. I don't think we're going to have 38 drivers for a very long time, once again.
How many do we have now?
Currently, we have 20. So, and they're very hard to get at that. And actually, funny enough, this Monday, February 7th, new federal qualifications were put into play to receive a Class B CDL passenger in school bus endorsement. So they have made it actually even that much harder for me to find, retain, and train school bus drivers. So.
So do I require you to retrain any of our current drivers?
It will not, fortunately.
That's good.
It just adds a lot more paperwork. It adds a lot more training time. So we now have to meet state standards and federal standards simultaneously to license a driver. So currently, I'm working with a committee with the Ohio Association for People Transportation, which I'm actively involved with very often to create the schedule in which we hire and onboard drivers so that there won't be errors and long holdups with our pre-service offices, office, and with our BMB training facilities. So we're doing our best. We use public and private training facilities. So we're hoping that all this information will kind of jive with both, but I can't make any promises to them. There is a committee working on things like this. But given the fact of us increasing our busing next year, attempting to, we're not going to get a lot more drivers. We need to improvise. So hopefully, the new system will only allow us to have to add three drivers. That's what I'm hoping for. That's my estimation. This year, we have two tiers. So we run Bellebrook Middle School and Belle Creek Intermediate together. And then we do Stephen Bell on its own. For special needs, we bus Stephen Bell preschool simultaneously. So those two tiers allow us to bus our current, our current student load. With obviously some struggles, I still drive several days out of the week. Still take field trips and just to make it work. But the new system will allow us to hopefully split our fleet in two, in most cases, and be able to transport all the students that we're adding. Until we start transporting or have some sort of an estimation of registration for next year, there's unfortunately not a way that I can tell you exactly how many kids are going to ride or exactly how many buses and drivers I'm going to need. We have been working diligently to replace some buses as funding becomes available. But that's, that's something that we've recently been trying to work on just to improve our fleet and attract drivers, hopefully. Newer fleets usually attract drivers, Mike. So what we're doing is moving from two to three tiers. So tier one would be Bellebrook Middle School by itself. We're hoping busing the middle school on its own will only have to have a certain portion of the drivers. We're hoping about 50% or less to bus the middle school. It will also hopefully decrease the behavior notices that we receive. We receive a lot of behavior notices for Bellebrook Middle. We receive a lot of behavior notices for Belbrook Middle School students, just intermixing with Bell Creek students, two different age groups. There's a lot of clashing here. So we're hoping to reduce the frustration for drivers, parents, and educators in this process. Our second tier is actually two tiers in one. So at this point is when we would split our fleet. So Stephen Bell, there would be half the fleet doing a Stephen Bell route and the other half doing a high school route. The only disadvantage that I can find to doing this is that we could be running the same street with two different buses. That's about the worst that I can think of that could happen out of this, and that's going to be pretty slim to none. It's very rare that a family has a Stephen Bell child and a high school child in the same house. It's not super gosh.
But some people do.
So the third tier would then just be Bell Creek by itself, which would be the other half of the fleet. So the idea is that bus driver A would have a Belbrook Middle School route, a Stephen Bell route. Bus driver B would have a VHS route and a VCI route. So what this allows me to do is to increase driver hours and invest in our current employees. So instead of having two and three-hour contracts available, I can make a four-hour and up contract available to that driver. So I'm trying to invest in our current staff that is very well invested in Belbrook. They care about Belbrook. They like it here. They come here for a reason. I'm trying to keep it that way. So that's part of the idea, trying to create driver benefits doing multiple tiers, increasing the hours. It also decreases the need for bus drivers, hopefully. That is what we're hoping and praying for is that this works in a positive manner, attracts drivers. That's our goal here. So we're lucky to have some very dedicated folks in our transportation department that work with me. We're very lucky things go as well as they do. So the additional tiers, like I said, they'll just provide extra traction for bus drivers, allow us to split the fleet so we won't have to purchase additional buses and hopefully not have to have, add additional staff.
And so school start and end times are going to, some of them are going to change and we'll get to that in just a second. And as we work through, as we present this, just make sure that we have covered all the bases. We're going to confirm them, those in the near future. We're still going to transport the middle school students over to the high school after school. We do that right now. And also we transport champions. That's our daycare. That's a contract. They contract with us, with our students. They're over at Stephen Bell right now. So that daycare, before and after school daycare, we'll continue to bus those students over to VCI next year. As Jacob was saying about the ridership, being a little unsure of that, especially at the high school level. So we're going to survey them later this month, early next month to see at the high school level who's going to ride so we can get a decent number out of those students. The projected cost of this plan, as I noted earlier in October when we discussed, was up to three additional drivers. Again, so we'll see what that really entails just based on ridership next year as we increase the, decrease ineligible zones and then also add back high school. High school. And again, if we did go to three tiers, it'd be many more additional drivers than we need. So that's the reason why I called it three tiers, giving our current employees more hours rather than hiring more employees with less hours. So in the end, it benefits our attractiveness for those positions. The other cost, additional fuel and maintenance costs, because again, we are doing another tier of transportation. So that is going to increase the maintenance and busing costs of fuel. However, it's easier to buy a new bus and gain an additional driver, just the challenge of finding those drivers. So if we can keep the number of drivers less, that would be more. And so Jacob, you want to talk about the ineligible zones?
Kind of go over here so everybody can see a little bit. So our current ineligible zone actually extends over Little Sugar Creek. I believe that Woodland Ridge is currently ineligible. Sugar Ridge is ineligible in several areas off of South Alphabell Brook as well as Berry Hill and maybe Road. There are sections of that that are ineligible. So with retracting this map to this zone, this would be the zone for the 22-23 school year. This would be included for Belbrook Middle School, Bell Creek, and Belbrook High School. This basically creates a way to school for children who have sidewalks connected to them. So anywhere in this zone has a walkable path to school. Anyone outside of this zone does not have a way to get across a main intersection without a crosswalk to get to school. Everyone in this zone has a crosswalk or a sidewalk that leads to the district. That was the plan when taking these in. So we also, I believe, have the next slide for Stephen Bell. Unless anybody have any questions on the first zone? So for Stephen Bell, currently the map actually spans over the apartments in much of the South Linda area. So obviously taking that crossing 725 portion out for Stephen Bell, all of these neighborhood streets in here that are still included in the ineligible zone, they're all 25 miles per hour. They could be blocked. Everything outside of this is crossing a main intersection where there's no crosswalk, and unfortunately, there is not a crosswalk that would go across 725, which there was desperately, but that doesn't seem to be in the works for anything yet. But we're also going to be busing our apartments as well. That's also a large population of students at Stephen Bell.
Jacob, how optimistic are you to find? Okay, you currently have 20 drivers. You need more than 23, I guess it was, right? You need three more?
I'm hoping not more than 23. I don't know how much luck we're going to have to find more than that. Other districts surrounding us are raising their pay. They're also having trouble finding drivers as well. I believe Kettering City Schools at Centerville's been getting a couple rolling in. This is just talking, but my peers in the area. I have two people in training right now. They both test in the near future. I would say the next three weeks. One at least testing on Tuesday, the next testing.
So the carrot that you're waving is more hours, right? So they just come in and work for an hour and go home and go...
Right. So currently we have some drivers that have a three-hour contract. So they drive an hour and a half in the morning. They drive an hour and a half in the afternoon. That's not very attractive to someone. Three hours, I mean, four hours and 20 hours a week, that's, in my opinion, part-time. That's officially a part-time job that's worth coming to work for 20 hours a week. I can tell you personally, if I was driving 15 hours a week, I'd find another district. So trying to make this job more attractive to people from the outside, okay, it's 20 hours a week. You have options to sub in midday here, here, and here. You know, you're eligible for field trips. That's my goal, is to try to get people in the door and understand that they can make money doing this.
Yeah, that's creative thinking. I appreciate you. I know you've worked hard to try to solve this very difficult problem. So thank you.
A lot of hours lost sleeping.
Jacob, can you help me understand one thing? You talked about each, I just want to make sure I answered this. Each driver will run two routes?
Correct.
Will buses, like will your iron run three routes? Like will a bus run three? Is that how we're saying, like...
So a bus will run two routes. So in total, we'll run four routes a day. A special needs route is going to have to run eight because we're limited on special needs buses. We only have certain buses that have lifts and aids onboard.
Okay, so each, okay, you're talking about a day. That's what I'm talking about. So each bus will run four routes a day?
Essentially, yes. Two routes.
Other than a, you have to equip buses, okay?
Correct.
Can you remind me, how's our driver pay compared to one of other districts in the area?
We're about in the median right now. So I believe our starting contract pay is $17.97 an hour. Centerville is just above that, I believe, around $8.50. Kettering pays $22.50 an hour, starting pay with five hours guaranteed. We, of course, we don't have any guaranteed hours. Well, actually, we do. We started that. We started contracting a couple of subs, trying that out. Kettering does that, and that's where I picked that up from. I've tried that. It's actually been pretty successful with the two people I've gotten in the door for it. We started doing those at three hours as our minimum contract hours for drivers.
So trying to guarantee those folks three hours of substitute, or not substitute, but at least three hours a day rather than being a substitute and just getting a job here or there. It's really hard with all the training, kind of the, all the training to be a bus driver. Then you're only going to maybe do it once or twice a week. So to try to get those permanent positions that they then sub, try to get them in the door so they then have a regular route. You know, try to have a bullpen of folks ready to roll the weight in.
Even if there's, in a perfect world, if there's nothing for them to drive, I would have them go through all my spare buses and pre-trip them every day. So in the need that they do have to go out, they're ready to go, they're legal to hit the road, and they're ready to haul children. They can also wash and fuel those buses. They can wash and fuel regular drivers' buses who might have a job midday in the school and don't have physical time to get to that task, whereas my mechanics ordinarily would have to handle that. But it is very tough to be a bus driver in America. It's hard to get a job in between two routes in the middle of the day. You can't come until nine. You have to leave by two. It's hard to fill a promise like that. So try to make that job a little more attractive to bring people in and help them understand it as a career. All of our drivers right now, this is their career. They have chosen this. They do a very good job at it. Very proud of them this year. We're kind of locked.
Don't touch my back. The drive plus screaming children.
They have a safety drive, 40-foot bus, up to 72 screaming children behind them.
Two of my own kids in the back of my 450.
I didn't tell you the first time I ever did it, I was over. It was like, oh, I really just did this, okay? But yeah, so that's the ruble that we have for this upcoming school year. Hopefully we can all work together and make that, pull to that.
Sorry, I have one more question for you. Yes. I realize this is hypothetical and put you on the spot, so feel free to punch me if you don't want to, but in your professional opinion, if hypothetically pay was to be raised, do you think that that would help or is it just there's not enough people out there looking for this right now?
I think it would put us within the competition. I can tell you right now that I lived in Belbrook and it was between $17.97 an hour and $22 an hour at Beaver Creek. Now we're going to be, that's $5 an hour. $4 an hour would make a difference for my drive. $4 is my gas today. So that could make a difference, yes. I can't make a promise. I feel like I can't. If I could drag people in, I would drag them in, but they say that's the problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jacob.
You're very welcome.
And kind of integrated in that, this is kind of together here where we're talking about these tiers. And obviously the start and end times then have to be complementary to those tiers. So if you want to go on to the next slide. So to make that, those three tiers, and really it's one and two A, two B, and then tier three, to make those things happen, transportation needs about 50 minutes between each tier to drop the kid, you know, pick, drop kids off, then pick new kids up, drop them off, and then go on to the next route. And so you've got to have 50 minutes between each of those. So to make sure that you're not starting too early and make sure you're not starting too late. And so there's a balancing act here. So our proposed school start and end times for next year, the middle school is from 7:30 to 2:30. They're currently 7:50 to 2:50. Stephen Bell, 8:20 to 3:00. Currently they're 9:00 to 3:40. The high school is 8:20 to 3:20. They actually stay the same, 8:20 to 3:20. VCI would be from 9:10 to 3:50. They're currently from 8:00 to 3:00. So the biggest shift here is going to be to the VCI. For the past three years, they've been at 8 o'clock. But that, before that, four years and beyond, they were about 9 o'clock or so. So they're getting back to kind of where they were at. And again, so some method to the madness of that is the high school and middle school, they can't go too late because of extracurricular activities and those kind of things. And we also separated these out to make sure that there's no, that every school has their own separate traffic pattern. So they're not congested and we're not doing VCI and high school at the same time. Each school is by themselves on that. So to make all that happen with extracurriculars and not starting too late and not starting too early and making sure that everybody's on their own timeframe, including preschools, so everybody would be in their own timeframe so there's no congestion, no double congestion, these are the times that we're proposing for next school year. And again, for after-school care, there's champions in Stephen Bell for our students. And they get transported, like I said, most of the students go to VCI or Stephen Bell. They get transported to VCI or Stephen Bell. Questions about that, school start here?
I'm sure for every individual family, just some families are going to love this, the changes, some will not, you know, like... Any change is going to come with, especially when you're trying to start the stop times, the busing. Hopefully, we're happy that busing is coming back, some of all of this change. We're going to get, this is going to be harder for the family that has a kid at middle school and a kid at VCI, they all have us, and now they've got to go out to totally separate times and make two totally separate drop-offs. But the fact that that exists also means they go be able to get from the middle school to VCI as you can now. So there's no super great option. I appreciate the creativity of this one.
Can I add one more positive thing to this? In doing a separated schedule like this, tiering our buses the way that we're planning to, this could allow us to continue to add back more transportation over time with potentially less staffing. As I pointed out before, that could be the silver lining in all of this, is this could help us out a lot in the long run.
So yeah, if there's potential that, okay, we're running a bus for a high school and it just turns out that a lot of the kids just aren't utilizing it. We could potentially allow more kids to ride or shrink their ineligible zones. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
I mean, over the next couple of school years.
We have the excess capacity, like that we realize?
Yes, like let's say we do it this coming school year and it's a massive success and we have surpassed all expectations. Our buses are not even as full as we thought they were going to be. Let's decrease the zone even part. That may allow us to, this system will allow us to potentially do that. We just have to get a gauge on who rides, how often they ride, what our numbers look like. And that also will be indicated on our state T1 report. And that's something I can also make available for the school board. We'd like to see the amount of students that we did transport this year with the lack of drivers. It was increased from last year for sure. With DOA ending, it definitely came up pretty fast this year.
Jacob, what time would I put a VCI student, a VCI student home if they rode the bus so far to you? I mean...
I'm going to try to keep the routes under 30 minutes. The idea behind all of these tiers and the separation of times is that it gives a bus driver 50 minutes. Once they leave a school to run a route, get to the school park, and get situated, ready to release students. That is the idea behind separating these times as far as we have, is to give the bus drivers time. Currently, for example, in the afternoon, my drivers leave VCI at like 3:05. They're at Stephen Bell at 3:30. They have 25 minutes to rush through a VCI middle school route, get to Stephen Bell. And some of the drivers are pulling in when kids are exiting the building. So trying to reduce some stress off of drivers and staff, trying to watch kids around buses, it'll reduce some stress up.
Yeah, I know there will be some changes proposed, but again, the purpose of getting it out in February here is that people have some time to see what those changes are and to plan appropriately for next school year so it's not going to be July for scrambling to try to figure it out. Okay, moving on to school calendars. So we're proposing school calendars for the next two school years. And this is last approved school calendars on February 24th and not tonight. We're going to keep going, go to the next slide. So this is the proposed calendar for next school year. As you'll note, that there is a little earlier start, August 8th for staff and August 11th for students. And getting out before Memorial Day there in May. And so some of the reasons for an earlier start date is finishing semester one before winter break. And semesters are relatively even. It's also, even though we're starting a little earlier, does give a few longer weekends throughout the school year such as November 11th, Veterans Day, a longer Thanksgiving break, a longer spring break or so. We do have the same amount of PD days as we did last year. However, we have three at the beginning of the year rather than just two. So it's a shorter first week for students. Students will be starting on Thursday. The same number of students and staff for next school year as we have this year. And so for '23, '24, it's really the equivalent calendar that the 22-23 school year is. And so for twenty-three, twenty-four, it's really the equivalent calendar that twenty-two, twenty-four. Just obviously the dates are one, one day off, but essentially it'll be the same kind of setup. Some questions, thoughts, comments on that?
Is there a reason we're starting so early? Are we feeding into Green County? Because are we feeding into the Green County Career Centers that we're aligning with them or?
They're on their own separate schedule.
Okay, so we can start whenever?
Yeah, they're on their own schedule.
So what's the thought process behind starting this early?
Again, giving some extra breaks throughout the school year, some longer weekends. And so the, you know, probably the equivalent of this year, calendar would be the next week. Would be the next week. So we're starting probably about four days earlier than we were last year. So I know it seems a little earlier, but it's really only four student days earlier, four workdays earlier. And then those four days essentially are put throughout the school year, such as Veterans Day is off. There's a one day longer at Thanksgiving break. There's a full winter break just because of the way that Christmas falls there. It can be a little awkward. And then there's a day longer of spring break.
At the end, at the end date.
A lot of the focus is getting through the first semester before winter break. It's not to come back for one, one week of the first semester after being out of school. And trying to keep the semesters even, which they aren't even right now. So a combination of those two things plus trying to get some days, some longer weekends throughout the school year and just the way this calendar falls with, with the holidays. So it's a combination of all those things that essentially we're starting four workdays earlier than we did last year. Last year, we started on Wednesday, or this year, this year, last year, this year. Started on that Wednesday. So now we're starting Thursday prior to that first semester.
I will share that. As a parent, this kind of made me whistle.
I saw it.
I'll be because I think we're going to have a lot of families that are going to miss that, that week. Not a hard no, but maybe feeling, yeah. This is, this is going to be, we're going to hear us.
Have we gotten staff feedback about this?
Yeah, actually, the, the union provides an option.
That's not what I'm hearing.
The, the union, in our contract, the union, we present, they have their, their, their calendar, and we have our calendar. And then the union folks vote on that. And the union voted on these calendars.
So as far as change, like just to highlight, changes that I saw that are, are not typical veterans standing out, because we are just for everyone's awareness, make sure I'm only getting my four-day weekend at Martha's weekend day rather than three.
One more day for students at Thanksgiving there. So a longer Thanksgiving break for students.
So it's a weekend a day?
Yep. No school on Veterans Day this year, this year, just people with P.E. day. So a longer weekend on that particular day. Three P.E. days at the beginning of the year. This year, there's two. And just the way winter break falls there with holidays, two full weeks on that. And then really one day longer of spring break and then the two long weekend in April there. Those are really the changes. So a long weekend in April, one day additional spring break, and then one additional day at Thanksgiving. There's your four days. I'm starting four days earlier.
It's rough. I would love to see this is personally, I feel like I'm speaking of anti-parents. I don't know that I am. I think it's a little geared from, sure, feedback from parents. So we can get back to Thursday for students, and I'm just looking at this from a student perspective, not, I'm not factoring in P.E. here. August fifteenth, the Monday, is a much more palatable start date, I think, for students rather than, you know, the Thursday and the week prior. And that's my, that's purely gut reaction as, as a parent. I don't know what the rest of your feelings are.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah.
I don't feel like we get out any earlier to swap that time. And I
Yeah, I get that more if we're out there.
For childcare purposes, I think that the longer weekends are problematic.
You're right. It's the same time getting out, it's just there's more breaks throughout the school.
Right, which is more problematic for people trying to arrange childcare. And David, did you say the, the staff wants this or does not want this?
They did vote on it.
Right, but that doesn't, does the, does the union represent a good portion of our district, Mr. Carrera? I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I'm so sorry.
It's about half or so.
It's, we have about a hundred and twenty members.
So what I'm hearing is August fifteenth, much more palatable for students, first day, longer breaks, issue with childcare. Again, regardless of the start date, sometimes it's better to not go for a full week, that first week. It just, that is a long week for students and staff. You can go from summer break to a whole week. But
But the staff would be here starting Monday anyway, so that doesn't really matter.
So what I can do, if you want me to try to gather additional feedback, I can do that. Anything about, that's why we didn't, we're not, it's not being asked to approve tonight, anything to think and thoughts. And then I can bring, I can gather those thoughts and bring something back on February twenty-fourth. Let's just have other thoughts.
Is it possible to include parents in that feedback?
I can do that. If that's what, if that's what the board would like me to do, I can do that.
It would be good to get some family feedback.
Okay with that?
Mark, was there, was it kind of an overwhelming in favor or was it close? Was it?
Well, I'll be honest, and usually we suggest version, we didn't this year, because we kind of left it up to what people thought.
Sure.
There were basically two differences, a late start versus the winter break. And the people chose the winter break. There were some people who did not vote. It was a winning vote. Was it? It was, it was bigger, it was a bigger gap than like our presidential elections. It was a bigger gap than the Letty vote. So I mean, it was a larger percentage of number lines.
Okay. I just wanted to get a ballpark. If it's overwhelmingly one, one direction, that would say something.
So I want to say it was about, and I know that this is not, so about fifty-five in favor, about thirty-five in favor of the other. And the rest didn't vote.
Okay.
I'm just curious. I'm sure a really complicated decision. There's lots of stakeholders already, teachers.
Sure.
Administration. Are there stakeholders I'm not aware of? Are there other tendencies or unintended consequences of people's lives, lives?
Do we have to talk about the E.S.C.?
E.S.C.
I was thinking sports, like, I don't know, like people practicing might have more problems, right?
False sports are impacted by, yeah, false sports are impacted by that.
I'm sure there's lots of parties you have to talk to to get the chess sports set up or something.
Yeah, sport, false sports would be a piece to that. Again, is that, is that a piece of the puzzle? Yes. Athletics come first and fourth, athletics, but that is a, and that's, that's one of the people that would be impacted by this. Definitely, if you have an earlier start, you have to work with them. The Green County Career Center, they're on their own schedule. It could pack, could impact the E.S.C. schedules. Or people, we, we folks that we contract with the E.S.C. for, so.
I guess just what I'm trying to ask is, you know, like, asking for more options, whatever, how big of an ask is that? Like, I was in, it was like, oh, that's going to be twenty hours of meetings or something like that. And you don't have to answer that. That's just my thought process and what I was thinking.
Um, it'd probably be about a week earlier than everybody else. So again, there's, there's a range of people who are starting, week of the fifteenth, people are starting a week or two later or two, so. So I will list a feedback from families. I'll send out some information about both the calendar and about the start and end times. Again, I think we're a little bit more locked into those start and end times.
Yeah, I think so.
Would not like me to solicit feedback on that specifically, just the school calendar. I can do that. Because again, I think we're, we're much more locked into those school and start times.
I think just the calendars.
I agree.
I don't want to give someone
False vote.
Yeah, okay, I can definitely do that. So I will do that probably realistically early next week.
Connected to Jabber Link three sixty.
All right, course of study, we want to go with middle school first. Mrs. Hill?
How long will this go? We can take a quick break?
We can take a quick break?
Yeah.
How long?
Five-minute break?
Sure, let's take five. Very good.
We're really looking forward to bringing that back. I think I can speak also for Stevens Bell and VCI to say we're so excited to have Art back there and just continue to really help that program. Then obviously pending your approval later tonight, we're really excited to have Mrs. Geist be full-time. She is just absolutely amazing in that classroom. And so now she will teach Art six, that she currently is, and then be able to build into Art seven with some of those same kids. So thank you for letting us bring that back. We're really, really excited about that opportunity. And then finally, for eighth grade, again, your four cores, might be math, the Algebra I, and even actually have some very advanced kids that are taking geometry. And then that encore is our Home Economics P.E. and then Design and Modeling. Again, two of those classes partnered with Green County Career Center. And then your elective rotation, Van Quire, or the eighth-grade rotation, which is Medical Detectives, Food and Fitness, and then Digital Literacy. And I really want to highlight our Digital Literacy courses and say a big thank you to my two teachers who have basically taken those, designed them with the help of Mrs. Gann and some new programs that we able to purchase. That's a really big new push from the state to promote digital literacy. It's also obviously happening at the elementary level. So those classes have been fantastic, just really trying to prepare our kids to, to know what, how to be literate on, on the internet, on social media, things like that. So those have been really successful classes this year. And like I said, we're just really grateful that Art seven's going to be able to come back. So thank you for that. Any questions I can answer for you about the middle school?
So if a student takes Algebra I or Geometry, does it count for high school?
It does, yes. So that is one thing we try to really make clear with parents. They are starting their high school transcript with those classes.
Hmm. Medical detectives. Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
It is super cool. So again, that's one of our classes that we partner with the Career Center.
Yeah.
And that is one of our elective classes. So basically, they really kind of put on the detective hat. And they explore all different medical issues, concerns, things like that. So one of the things that's really fun for me is different teachers are given, like, one of our counselors was told, here's your symptoms. This is what you have to do. And the students actually had to come and ask her, so what are your symptoms? And she told them, and then they had to actually diagnose her with what they thought. And so it's actually a springboard class into one of the high school courses, too, that looks into that. So Ms. Bruggerman's been able to work with the high school and kind of help springboard into that, kind of be a builder course, which was something we had talked about with the Career Center that they really wanted to pursue. So that was why we chose that class, because it aligns with one of our high school courses.
Okay, aligns with biomedical high school, which is also Green County Career Center class.
Yeah, so those two teachers have been collaborating and working together. She's been down at home to Ms. Bruggerman a lot, which has been fantastic. Yeah, so it's a really neat course. They do a dissection of a, I think it's a sheep brain, it's either sheep brain or pig brain. I'm sorry, I can't remember because I don't go near it during that time. And they actually have to find different parts. And there's, I believe there's a tumor that they have to locate and all that stuff. It's, it's a really cool course. Yes.
John, remind me, for the seventh graders in that elective rotation, what this year is in that art department?
Uh, fitness. So right now, those seventh-grade students get like a double P.E., which we love, don't get me wrong. But that's kind of the best place that it fit since all seventh graders get P.E. And so that was part of the elective rotation. So that's kind of where it'd fit best. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Diane from high school?
I'm not a good draw. Hi, I'm Daisy Anne, Principal of Oakburg High School. I literally had twenty PowerPoint slides. I'm not going to do that to you at this point. But to kind of summarize, building off of the middle school, when the kids get to high school, they have a lot more freedom, I guess, of what they take. They're earning credits towards graduation. Our advanced diploma requires twenty-four credits, and our standard diploma requires twenty-two, both of which are far beyond state minimums. We offer over one hundred different courses at the high school within thirteen different departments. We have fifteen A.P. classes and fourteen college credit plus classes offered in-house that our students can take college classes and earn college credit without ever leaving the building. Last year, our students earned over nineteen hundred college credits at D.H.S. in the, you know, in the program, both in the building and out. You guys, you'll have the course guide in front of you. See, it's many, many pages. And we have many, many classes, like I said, over one hundred. All of our core classes are based on Ohio State standards and follow those standards. Again, we have A.P. classes throughout the different thirteen departments. And then also we have our J.R.T.C. program, aerospace science. We have our engineering program, which is going to be kind of taken over by Career Center next year, but it was the first in the county. And Lincoln and Dave do a great job of that. We have biomedical program, which I mentioned a moment ago, taught by Mrs. Goodwin. And there are four classes there, also in line with the Career Center. And we also have a Family Consumer Science program, which is, it's massive. Anything from cooking to cuisines to design, home design, to adulting one-on-one or life one-on-one, we're calling it, kind of your basic, you know, how to do things you can do to survive as an adult. And I could use a refresher sometimes. You know, depending on our staffing and on student interests, what we offer and what we run each year kind of varies. Some classes that we put out there for scheduling, not enough kids will take, so we kind of don't offer it that year. So it's a constantly changing course of study. And we hope to provide and create well-rounded individuals who will be successful in college, out in college, in the workforce, in the military, whatever they face when they leave our building. A few new courses this year. The state of Ohio has finally defined what a Algebra II equivalent is. They've given us several different curriculum to look at. For example, we're going to add a two semester statistics classes and probability classes, which will be considered a Algebra II equivalent. We're also going to add a quantitative reasoning class, which is a full-year class, which will also be considered an equivalent to Algebra II. So that's, will be some alternatives for some of our kids who maybe don't want to do Algebra II, maybe go in a different direction. And gives them a few more opportunities there. We are looking
I'm sorry, I had a question on that, and I have probably asked.
Yeah, it works.
I love, and I mostly, and I would have sent you this question earlier this week, but I didn't get a chance to listen, so just to be honest with you. I love the three new math classes. They're really awesome, especially for talking about kids that want to learn practical math. My question about the future and the fact that My question about the future and the fact that those courses are equivalent to Algebra II in that they can flow into precal? In my experience, taking a stats class without Algebra II would not prepare you for precal?
I'd have to look at what they have in there right now. I would not suggest that. Although, some of the skills should be the same. Most of the kids that were taking those courses probably aren't going to move into precal. They may go back to Algebra II, they may take another math.
That's kind of what I thought. So that's, that just stood out to me that you could take quantitative reasoning instead of Algebra II as a prereq to.
I'd say kids could take it, we wouldn't recommend it, but some kids may be able to. I wouldn't want to slam the door.
Sorry.
No, you're good. We're also changing our physics class a little bit. We're going to have two different levels of physics, kind of a CP physics, which is kind of the, not basic, but kind of your regular physics class in high school. And then we're going to have a scholarship physics, which is kind of more nearing the AP level, just sub AP level. Our numbers in physics have not been as high in the last few years that have passed. We're trying to get more kids to take those more rigorous classes and kind of get back into it. So we'll offer a couple of different varieties there. We're also throwing a few other classes into our ELA mix for electives. We have Research and Design Thinking, which is kind of a, there's an AP course with a similar name. And basically what kids will be doing is choosing a topic they want to research and it's a research class. They will spend a semester researching that topic and digging in and writing. But any, the semester could have a research project. So we'll see where that goes depending on interest. Also, Women's Studies is another elective we may run this year depending on interest. But again, kind of looking at women as a diverse social group. To look at the status of women in history and how that's changed and where they are now. Give the opportunity for some more students may look at things from a different view, different viewpoint. And also, I think it will also help kind of develop a diverse and keep developing a diverse and inclusive school that we want to give some kids some more options out there to look at things. You know, over 50% of our students are female or Asian. And I would think there'd be a lot of interest in a class like that. Any questions?
I have a couple.
Sure.
I love the, you know, the flexibility and having things added, maybe taking away their years. Because you guys were, just kind of curious, are there like a targeted number of classes that you try to add each year or is that, is that just?
It varies from year to year. There's, we've gone years without any change. We went many years basically teaching the same kind of things. But over the last few years, we've had the opportunity to try to mix it up. Students' interests change, our staffing obviously changed, rules from the state changed. For example, physical education, they started changing some things where you have DE waivers now for sports and things. And to keep kids in those programs, we changed what we offer away from just your usual physical education one and two. We now have weightlifting, we have women's weightlifting, we have a dance class, we have, a number of different things, speed and agility, that different kids who may not have been in a phys ed class because they're in marching band and got their waiver or sport, are taking those classes to fill out their schedule to keep them interested and keep them active and healthy, which is good. Again, our engineering classes change from time to time. Our capstone project, their capstone class in engineering going into next year. The proposal is to add a material science piece to that, which I'm all about and would love to have that class. But the Career Center is going to help us to make that happen for that senior capstone class along with Engineering Math, which is also part of that class. So a lot of good opportunities for kids. Again, if you want to produce kids, no matter what their interest is, they can find something to do at the school and that will prepare them for life after graduation. And we're looking successful.
The kind of the process for new classes coming in, I'm just curious. Like at what, at what point is like our syllabus set? Or at what point do you have our textbooks or our books to be used or worksheets or whatever? Is that kind of set now for the new classes coming in? Or is that still being figured out?
It's being figured, it's, well, it depends. It depends when all takes place, so we'll kind of wait the game now. As we're going into scheduling, scheduling starts in the next week or so. We do have sell-by for most of our classes. Nothing we're teaching is too crazy or out there, it's all pretty standard. Sometimes with the books, we don't get the books till later. And some of the classes don't even have books, we're pulling in resources from other places. Some classes there don't even have books, they don't exist. So you kind of have to pull it together. But before, we would prove something or bring it to them, that we have a curriculum with the classes. And there's at least a bare bone syllabus put together. But some of those things changes. New resources develop, we find new things. Teachers have the flexibility to do that, make that happen.
One more.
Sure.
You highlighted the things that are new. Did we drop anything based on lack of interest or?
There's always courses out there. We didn't, we don't really drop them necessarily. There's a few classes that may fade away on their own if these other classes now compete them or more students take them. In the past, we've approved classes that we thought were going to be a hit, but for whatever reason, one of those next cohorts of kids didn't run into them. Or we had a sports journalism class we thought was going to be really cool. And then kids were all about it and then COVID hit and nobody signed up. Just didn't happen. And the teacher who was going to teach it developed and retired and that was in that, so. But you're always looking for new things to keep kids' attention and to help them in that next level. Sometimes things come. You can't run it if you don't have the people, so that's the other thing. We don't have enough staffing and we can't make it work. Electives usually are the first things to go.
I think this is what Mike was asking me to quite follow, was the initiative for a new class, does it come from within or is it from without? Does it come from the state? Does it come from?
Sometimes it's from the state. Okay, for example, the math classes, it was came from the state. The Research and Design Thinking, the Women's Studies, that came from within. We had teachers who were interested in offering a class like that. The next step. Physics, we've always been offering that, but that came from a teacher saying, hey, let's look at this. Can we make this more open, more accessible for kids? And so that came from within too. So it comes from all over the place. Sometimes the state will mandate it. I mean, personal finance, obviously it's required now. So there's a lot more of those sections offered than we're at at this time. So we have to react to that and also react to what the kids want. Sometimes the kids come up with an idea.
Do you solicit proposals from within or is it just somebody who says their own court comes up and says, hey, I'd like to offer a course?
It depends. A few years ago, we asked English Department for more electives because basically at that point we had public speaking and maybe film. And they offered a number of electives, which we tried to offer and some of them kind of stuck and some of them didn't. So it kind of goes both ways. There's also, the biggest thing is, is there room in the schedule? Do we have enough staffing to make it work? And do we have enough student interest? Because things all kind of come together.
Do department heads help with the cultivation or development or screening of those kind of things?
We don't have department heads right now.
Yeah, I guess kind of on that, I was going to ask, like, can you talk a little bit more? Is there a process, is it formal, is it informal? If I'm a teacher, I'm like, hey, I got a great idea for a class. Is there a review board that discusses?
Review board is the admin, the other teachers, our curriculum director, support tenant, we all live with these things. And we see if it's viable and something kids are interested in. Sometimes we'll ask students, hey, we offer this course, would you sign up for it? And sometimes it's from the state that says, hey, here it is. So. So that's kind of the process. We have several levels to look at it. Teacher brings it to us, makes suggestions. Sorry, I need to cut you off.
No, no, I was just going somewhere else.
I just had a question about diplomas. So like the Graduation with Honors, those are very specific targets. But then on the front, the Advanced Diploma and Standard aren't as specific. So like, would like, for example, geometry be required for the Advanced and Standard diplomas? Or is it just kind of any math credits that?
Geometry is, is a state standard.
Is a state.
Yeah, you have to go through Algebra II or the equivalent. That's what we have, is the ones right in there. The Honors diplomas, those are all kind of state, by the state, and they're beyond what we have. They don't, it's not really a special diploma, it might be a stamp. It's more likely that, hey, you know, say that you had it. We have a lot of kids get that, obviously. But they're all usually getting the Advanced Diploma line and they also qualify for the different honors diplomas as well. There's just more layers. Alright, alright. See, that's all, we didn't have any slides. Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Alright, next is Open Communication. Do we have anybody to sign up? Yeah, okay. Alright, so then, thank you very much, Dave. Going on to New Business. In that, in that category, we'll do a Consent Agenda for 7A, 7B, and 7C. Except for, we'll pull out 7A1 and 7A7 and 7B2. So it's all, sorry. So it's all, it's all of it, 7A, B, and C. And then taking out A1 and then A7 and B2. I know that he said bingo.
I said before.
Oh, I said before. Okay. Alright, so for the Consent Agenda items 7A, B, and C with the exceptions, is there anything else that a board member wants to have treated separately?
Okay, wait, I'm sorry, just to make sure I'm clear. I got the ones I think that we'll pull out. Is the hand carry included because that's 7A?
It is, yes.
Okay, so the hand carry items are included in the Consent Agenda.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you for that question. Anything else to pull out? Alright, then do I have motion for the Consent Agenda with the identified exclusions?
Someone?
Mrs. Dorn?
Second.
Mrs. Anderson? Questions or comments? Alright, Mr. Lemming, please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. I'll turn it over to Dr. Coe.
Yep, so 7A1. Do you have a motion?
Someone?
Second?
Second.
Please call it.
And they call the roll? Yep.
Okay, Mr. Carpenter?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And, Dr. Motion for 7A7 and 7B2.
Someone?
Second?
Second.
So Mrs. Dorn and Mrs. Anderson?
Do you want to call the roll?
Okay, Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, so going on to D, Course of Study for 22, 23. Turn back a little bit, Dr. Coe.
Recommended approval for the 2022, 2023 Course of Study for Belburg High School and Belburg President.
You have a motion?
Motion.
Mrs. Anderson?
Second.
Mrs. Dorn? Any questions or comments?
I just kind of have a question. You guy, you have a question, so. Can you explain what the consent motion says, Course of Study? So what, what exactly are we approving in doctrine? I assume that this is not approving curriculum. This is only approving that the courses be listed in the handbook along with the accompanying description.
Right.
Yep.
Correct. Say, am I disagree with that?
That's correct.
Okay. Can I assume that that Courses of Study phrase, that's what that has meant historically? Or is that the first time we've used that?
Course selection.
Yeah, of course, selection. Okay, very good, thank you.
Good, yep, oh, good, good question. Any other questions or comments? Alright, Mr. Lemming, please call the roll.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
D, Athletic Camps 2022, recommended approval of the following 2022 Summer Athletic Camps, Cheerleading, Cheerleading Overnight, and then Volleyball.
Do we have a motion?
Someone?
Mrs. Dorn?
Second.
Mr. Kinsey? Questions or comments? Alright, Mr. Lemming, please call the roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
OHSAA Membership, recommended approval of the Resolution Authorizing Continued Membership of Belburg High School, Middle School, and the Ohio Athletic Association for the upcoming 22, 23 school year for students in grades seven to 12.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Kinsey and Mrs. Anderson. Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Alright, Mr. Lemming, please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'd say travel, recommend approval, I'd say travel for the following, Kelly Anderson with Nipper, Sandman, Austin, Texas, attended American School Counsel Association Conference, July 9th to 12th, paid with federal grants, title two A funds, no cost to the district.
Do we have a motion?
Someone?
Mrs. Dorn?
Second.
Mrs. Anderson? And assuming Kelly is not related to you. Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Alright, Mr. Lemming, please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Right. Are there items of information and comments? Mr. Price has one.
Yes, I think y'all were three minutes, half o'clock. Y'all know it's been a concern of the community and a real passionate concern of mine at the situation in front of Feedwire School here with the crosswalk. It is thankfully, it makes the administration finding a way to fund the crossing guard on both Feedwire and Upper Belburg, and I think it really does matter. I've gone out there several times this year, watched Cheryl Neal especially, also gone over here on Upper Belburg. And one of the continues to give my concern is Feedwire. We had a gathering this week of township and county engineers and police to discuss the situation on Feedwire here. Prior to that, I did some research with the Institute for Highway Safety Insurance Group. And, you know, they're nonpartisan, they're nonpolitical. Here's just the facts on how we can deal with road concerns. And some research I came across on their site was between 2009 and 2018, there was a 45% increase in deaths, not accidents, but deaths, pedestrian deaths. And they're trying to look at where this happened. And where they happen more often than not, predominant implication was arterial fibros, as in ones that go to highways. So think of, it's exactly what Feedwire is, taking people to 675 and non-intersections. And again, that's the perfect classic example of what we've gone on, have gone on in front of middle school here. So we brainstormed with ideas and nothing is a solution. There is no solution for this. There are things that can be done to mitigate the risk. So this week Cheryl Neal was off, God bless her, she had a grandchild. So she took off, I think, to Illinois somewhere. And so I found out about that on Wednesday, so I thought, hands up. So I went out there the last two mornings, I'll do it tomorrow as well as this afternoon, and I'll do it tomorrow afternoon as well. And I did the duty, you know, and you watch what's going on there and it's not good. Especially, I thought it was going to be worse in the morning, but it was actually worse in the afternoon. I'm taking kids across the crosswalk, here goes somebody right through the crosswalk on the other side. There were people probably going 45 miles an hour. I let her step out like this with my little. out like this with my little green vest on and actually slowed down. But yeah, it's a serious situation. So when I asked the township, I'm sorry, county engineer to look into, there's a light system and what's it called? Janescowski.
It's not HAWK.
HAWK, HAWK. It literally is a red light. You push the button, it's a red, it goes yellow, flashing, and then flashing red, and then finally goes red. There's some debate whether that is, has been approved by, a question of whether the federal government's approved and allowed that, if there are districts and locations that have. They now think it actually is allowable. So they're going to go research that and see if we can go road study, if we can justify getting one. How we pay for it is a discussion for a different day. However, now to get to the point. So one of the things we talked about, I noticed it, but I never really put it together. The school zone lines or lights on Feedwire, they set up about 15 or 20 feet high. The standard for that is seven feet. So there are people driving by. I'm sort of being kind here, giving them the benefit of the doubt that they don't know the school zone. But, you know, the lights are up, so maybe they aren't seeing. We've got crosswalk lights that are very wide on this road. People aren't seeing it. So, so one of the things I had asked about was whether, like you call it travel in Clough, you'll see the flashing lights associated with the, with the speed lamp sign over there. Now, I was wondering if we have some equivalent for the, for high school, or sorry, for school zones. And Janescowski, I was sure she went and found this. And so what I would like for the board to consider, we can follow this in the next meeting or whatever. I think it's pretty much a certainty there going, the township and/or the county is going to reduce the height of our school zone signs here on Feedwire while we're investigating other things that we can help do to mitigate the risk of our standards there. I would like for us to consider as a board, because of just the funding realities, if we try to fund it some other way, it's going to take a long time. I would like for us to look at one of these radar speed lights that would be in association with the school zone light. And the way I would imagine it working, it would only be functional when the school zone light's on. So you don't desensitize people to that light. So when that school zone light's on, it's coming through there 45 miles an hour, a thing will flash at them. And again, it will mitigate the risk. It won't, it's not a solution, helpful solution. So I'd like for us to consider that. I'll do some legwork, find out how much these things cost. And if they're going to move the lights anyhow down the folds, at the same time, potentially, whatever wiring they're going to do, they could do this at the same time. So I'm making numbers up here. I know the one over by Clough, they spent, that one was around $5,000 for that radar light over there. So if we're looking at two of these, maybe, we're going to make the numbers up here, but maybe $10,000. And if we can find some way potentially out of the school system to fund that, even if we have to think in terms of even COVID funding that we got, because we've got more kids walking, so we're going to mitigate risk to them, you know. I'm just thinking creatively here. So just give some thought to that. We can follow up on March 24th. And, sorry, four and a half minutes.
This is a tough crowd.
She has a question.
Amazing, Oliver's for meeting with women's funding is not here.
Thirty-seven minute record meeting was when I'm sitting in.
I have two things.
Real quick, real quick.
Great.
Under a minute. I'd like to welcome Matt DeLong, who's our new district coordinator. He's not here tonight, but Janes will be really happy about him coming on.
That's her, she has.
Just welcome to him. And also, I wanted to let everybody know, the bridge is out. It's in the mailbox this week. Also sent an email out with that in additional format. All those additions are on our website, this edition or past editions. It also has our quality profile in there, which highlights all the great things that our district, our students, our staff are doing. So that's a part of the bridge, and we do that every year. And again, that is, the quality profile is also on our webpage under our communications section.
That's really nice. It's really nice.
Yeah. Thank you. That's it. Under a minute.
Okay. Good job.
I just had a question too, if I could get an update on community chats, if we're planning to continue those, or where we're standing with those, if those were worth it or not worth it, or engaging with them.
I think that's up for discussion for the board. I'm open, I mean, whatever direction the board wants to go with that. I think the, I don't want to speak for the board, but I think the critical piece is what is the topic? I think the topic is the crux of whether we're going to get some folks out and have a, I don't want to speak for the board, but I think the topic is probably the most important thing to draw people in to talk.
I would like to continue those. I'd like to continue those in some fashion, wherever they're in.
One of the things that we talked about during our school board training there on the 29th was how to better engage the community. And one of the possible ways of doing that was like, since we're actually going to have the Sugar Maple Festival this year, it looks like that we would have a booth there like we've done in prior years. And then also looking at potentially the Lions Club is another opportunity. I know, I think last year that was requested and turned down. And it was somewhat understandable because it was an election year. They wanted to be seen as a, as a opportunity to campaign for positions. But opportunities like that, for people to be able to approach the board in a place they're already at anyhow, to have discussions, or board members, I should say, rather than the board, I think would be welcomed by the community. And I just, as I maintain, for the grace of being on the board, we have to do a better job of engaging with the community, talking to them, listening, giving feedback, and being approachable.
Just this week, we set up, or we verify, confirm that we have a good intention.
Very good. So we're just going to figure out the meaning for that and just.
Yeah, coordinate that.
Yeah, so just if we could come up with some ideas, you know, ways we can go out and engage the community, that would be good.
Yeah.
As far as the community chats, we are previously utilizing your advisory committee because they're made up of such a cross-section of the community to recommend topics. So I don't know when the next one of those, but that.
I know, send them out very soon. And we can approach the topic with them also.
That's a really bad, I mean, I can maybe, it was kind of formed in a sense that there's some, it kind of really does represent one of everybody in this community. And maybe they have an idea of what they want to talk about.
And I love the idea of the Sugar Maple Festival this day. I don't know if we want to decide tonight to do it or sometime, but maybe, you know, in between work views, we all come up and we write down 10 ideas. Some of them, and some of them may be terrible. And we all come together and be like, hey, maybe we can set up that same booth outside of a football game, outside of a basketball game. Maybe Don Sparking would let us do it once a year, maybe. And we could maybe come up with ideas.
Maybe church, like churches, as she said, yeah.
Church is great. How we could man something like that, just to be outranged.
And I think the sooner that we do it, when there's not a need, it looks like we have true intentions.
I don't know if we want to commit tonight, but we can come back next time. Another item to discuss, we all come up with a few ideas.
That would be reasonable for our next, yeah, for in two weeks.
I'm not saying you coordinate that.
Of telling people.
Exactly.
They can put that on the agenda for item of discussion for February 24th.
That'd be good.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. For executive session, the board will meet an executive session for the purpose of considering employment and compensation of licensed public employee for revised code 121.22, paragraph G1. Board action may follow. Is there a motion for that? Mrs. Dorn?
Second.
Mrs. Anderson? Mr. Leming, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsey?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. Motion passes. We are going into executive session at 9:10 PM.